Good morning, now that everyone's all awake and we have the static going. Good morning and welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission, June 22nd, 2016. May we have our roll call, please?
Gong.
Here.
Bailey's.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Hiliano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible).
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Approval of the minutes of June 8th, 2016. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second motion.
Vote.
Gong.
Hastain.
Bailey's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
We have parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Do we have anyone that has on the commission that has any of them that want to be pulled? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on these items. For anyone that would like to make comment. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearings on these items. And do we have a recommendation for the tentative parcel map number PPM 16-002 Roger H. and Marion J. Andreas, Greg Owens, Barry and Associates?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and conditionally approve the tentative parcel map PPM 16-002 and the waiver of the final map.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Gong.
Yes.
Bailey's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Item 4B is a tentative parcel map number PPM 16-015 Gary and Mary K. Elrich, Neil Zerling Land Surveyor Incorporated. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the category exemption with California Environment Quality Act, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines, and approve the two exceptions pertaining to the parcel being created within their urban development boundary and not having direct frontage on existing public road in defer of improvement for the private vehicle access easement and conditionally tentative parcel map number PPM 16-.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
And the vote, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Bailey's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Item 4C, a tentative parcel map number PPM 16-013 Jason and Loriann Morton, I'm sorry, Norton, California Land Surveying. Do we have a motion?
I just wanted to, I mean, this one looks fine to me. It's in three acres, I'm familiar with the property. I just want to mention that this is another one of those to improve the potential income producing of that particular parcel. Down the road, there may be a project here, and we just have to make sure that the flood considerations are met and they are outlined in the condition. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-013 to divide this parcel. And the site's located on the west side of North Fork Drive.
Thank you. A second?
I second it.
And the vote, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Bailey's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved. Item number 5A, this is a special use permit PSP 16-012 S&amp;S Metal Fabrication Incorporated, GMA Consulting Engineers and Architects Incorporated. This is a categorical exemption and special use permit to establish a facility that manufactures agriculture machinery and equipment, including cells and storage, with at least 50 percent of the products are sold directly to farmers on a three-point, three-plus acre portion of a 4.01 acre three parcel property located in the AE20 Exclusive Agriculture 20-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Road 8 and Avenue 384, Boston, across from Kings County, approximately two miles east of State Route 99 and one mile south of Kingsburg. And our contact is April Hill. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, particularly on loan commissioners. S&amp;S Metal Fab would purchase the property and would like to relocate their 15-year-old facility from a location inside Kingsburg city limits. They have increased their business and outgrown the site. They specialize in fabrication of ag equipment and parts like conveyor rollers and parts for ag food processing, feed truck knives for dairy feed trucks, agricultural bin trailers and custom harvesting equipment. They also repair agricultural implements and sell parts. The applicant estimates that more than 70 percent of their customer base is farmers. Other products manufactured on the site are custom gates and fences, handrails and signs.
Bless you.
They operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They have six employees, hope to grow to eight. Here's the general location. As we mentioned, it's just across Avenue 384 from Kings County. The facility has direct access to Road 8 and Avenue 384. Public works requires construction of a drive approach at each point of access and to surface all onsite parking areas, which the applicant plans to do. Estimated daily trips are about average 22, which is much less than the 100 trips required that would require a traffic impact study. Project is consistent with relevant elements of the general plan, in particular, land use policy for agricultural support facilities, which states that the county shall encourage beneficial reuse of existing or vacant ag service facilities for new businesses, including non-ag uses. The site contains a pretty dilapidated metal building that was used at some point as a packing shed, and there's a loading ramp also on the site, a scale's also on the site. It's outside any urban development boundary, subject to the RVLP Rural Valley Lands Plan designated for Valley Agriculture. It's in the AE20 Exclusive Agriculture 20-acre Minimum Zone, which requires an conditionally approved special use permit. The project complies with zone-required yard areas, distances between structures. They do plan to merge the two of the parcels in order to allow yard areas for the new steel Right now, the site contains, as I said, a pretty dilapidated metal shop building, asphalt parking area, truck scale, accessory building, pump house. There's a single-family residence on the northern parcel that will be occupied by a caretaker. The facility's equipment will generate noise, but will be operated inside the proposed metal structure. The nearest off-site residence is about 214 feet south of the facility, across Avenue 384. There's four of the residences within 500 feet. However, the distance lessens this level of sound, and the noise should have a minimal effect on nearby residences. Operating hours will be limited by condition of approval between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Mondays through Fridays. The site plan shows the three parcel site. On the southeast corner, there'll be a metal building larger than the existing one, and they'll pave the parking area with asphalt concrete. Here's site photos of the old photo, of the old metal building that has received a demolition permit, so it probably is no longer. Please note the packing boxes left from the previous use. Here's a view of the building from the back, from Road 8. There's no waterways or wetlands on the site. On the opposite side of Road 8 is Bishop Canal, and the Kings River is about 1,500 feet south. The California Natural Diversity Database of June 2016 shows no species of concern, and as noted, the site has been used for agricultural-related services for decades, contains structures, and is surrounded by vineyards, orchards and rural residences. Site's in a flood hazard zone X, no flood mitigation measures required. Project is categorically exempt from SEQA pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. A public notice was mailed to owners of the properties within 300 feet of the subject site and was published in the Vicelli Times Delta. This ends staff's report. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I see here that you noticed the people in Kings County across the street there. Did you notice the county itself, or just, and no comment?
No comment.
I didn't see a letter or anything.
All right, yeah.
Right.
A couple times.
Okay, yeah, just fine. And we didn't get any other letters? I didn't notice any letters from any of the neighbors or any complaints or anything?
No, no word whatsoever.
Well, from the looks of the photos, I'm sure the neighbors are probably glad to have them there and clean the place up.
They have expressed appreciation.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we will open the public hearing now. If we have anyone that would like to make comment on this project at this time, you're welcome to do so.
Agent and applicant were planning to be here, but agent's coming from Fresno, so must have been delayed.
Okay.
Oh.
That's okay.
Rob Sanders from Gerald Bell and Associates, I'm the architect on the project.
Your address, please.
7337 North Fresno, California, Suite 110. So yes, it's going to be a huge improvement from what's out there right now. They're a very good, family-run business, and I think it'll be a great facility for right in that location. It's good for them with access to 99 and to all the farmers in that area, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. And do we have any comments from the commission, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion here that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pertaining to construction and location of limited numbers of new small structures and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 16-012.
I'll second that.
Vote, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Bailey's.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Hiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion has been passed. Thank you. Thank you, April. We have a 5B, special use permit PSP 15-007 Nora Baca. This is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 15-007 to allow assemblages of people for educational or entertainment purposes on a two-plus acre portion of a 20-acre parcel in the AE20 Zone. The site is located on the west side of Road 196, approximately 2,000 feet south of Avenue 232, State Route 137, and 1.7 miles west of Lindsay. And again, our contact is April Hill.
Good morning again. Velma has distributed a memorandum with comments from the Sheriff's Department and revised draft resolution with two additional conditions of approval. The applicants request a use permit for up to 12 commercial assemblages of people per year that will take place on weekends between the month of April and November. The assemblages are weddings, parties, consenarias with live entertainment, and they're held outside. Maximum number of guests would be about 500. Event hours would be 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., with setup in the morning hours, 6:00 a.m. to noon. There's adequate parking available on the site. Renters provide their own food, beverages, security, chairs, tables, canopies, portable toilets and liability insurance. The site is outside any urban area boundary, urban development boundary, and is designated for Valley Agriculture. The property owner is required to sign a right-to-farm notice. The project is consistent with relevant policies of the general plan upon special use permit approval. It's located in the AE20 Zone and surrounded by properties in the AE20 and AE40, with one in the M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone for a welding shop to the east. Conditions of approval are included to ensure compliance with development standards specified for assemblages of people inside the Rural Valley Lands Planning Area. The subject lies about 2,000 feet south of State Route 137. Caltrans recommended a condition of approval for warning signs, a traffic management plan. However, there's been no collisions on Road 96 near the subject site between 2011 and 2016, and the number of assemblages is limited to 12 weekend events. So there'll be a maximum of about 170 vehicles accessing the site during off-peak hours, and the intersection with State Route 137 has traffic signals and left turn lanes. The applicant will be required to post signs saying "special event ahead" and "no parking on the street" sign. Here's an aerial, oops, where's my stuff going? There's the aerial showing surrounding agriculture and scattered rural residences. The 20-acre property contains row crops and a residence and the assemblage facility. The nearest existing off-site residence is about 1,600 feet northeast of the facility. Property is in an ag preserve. County's uniform rules allow assemblages of people with a conditionally approved use permit. Okay, now, this is the entrance to the residence as improved. There's the intersection, back to the site plan.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the pictures, the last one of the pictures? One more, sorry, there.
There has been a drive approach installed as required by a previous land use permit.
Oh, okay. So there's nothing out there?
There is a residence. Sort of confusing, this Palm Tree Drive leads to nothing right now, must have been a residence from before.
At one time. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, April. 500, how many trips do they figure? I missed that, I think.
We calculate that 500 guests would be divided by three, three people per car, so there'd be about 170 cars. And there's parking available on the site.
And I read here that all they're going to do is spray down the thing with water?
Yes, they've got.
We've gone a quarter of a mile, dirt road?
Yeah.
And we're going to have 100 and some cars, and they're going to spray it with water and expect to keep the dust down?
That's been our standard condition of approval.
The other thing is, they got an exemption, that's, that access is longer than is allowed. Isn't that right? I mean, what's the term I'm looking for here? We've got a length for, a limit for an access road going back in, right?
The, back up here. The parcel map that divided it originally had it designated for ag only, and so they didn't have to improve. When they put the house on, they had to improve up to a parcel one standard. So it's got gravel on it. Probably will have to be replenished regularly, but it's 12, it is 12 events a year.
Yeah, that, you know, I'm not happy with that, that doesn't look like an all-season road, especially with that kind of traffic and 12 events a year and that distance.
I wish I had a more.
I just don't think it's going to, I think it's going to be a nuisance to the neighbors before the thing is over with, unless they do something more permanent with that exit, that road.
I wish I had a more recent photograph. The drive approach and the improvements were made in about March.
And the improvements are simply gravel, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's going to last.
I've been studying this additional information we received. So I'm a little confused. Is this a new use permit, or was there an existing use permit?
There was an existing temporary use permit for four events.
They're going to 12, okay.
Right.
And it's been a lot of complaints, because we never hear from the sheriff.
No, that's what the second page is.
Those are from two years ago, is that right?
Right.
Not recently.
Right, they didn't do events while we were processing this use permit.
They didn't have any events last year.
They had no events last year, so they wouldn't have any complaints.
Right.
And same owners?
Yes. Same owners, and Nora Baca is the daughter of the owners, and she's the one who arranges the rentals. Okay, so we've got, we'll get you come up.
One moment. Yes, thank you. I'll open the hearing in a moment.
So on the site plan, you can see the house, which has a pool, and there's a four-foot-high fence dividing the assemblage area from the residence. The assemblage's portion includes a food and beverage bar, a gazebo with cemented to put the portable toilets on. As I said before, there are about, there's adequate parking on the site, including accessible parking per the Americans with Disability Act. There's a six-foot-high chain link fence around the whole area, and they propose planting a lawn, adding a dance floor and a stage. Fire department recommended, provided requirements for tents or canopies to meet California fire code.
Do they have the events before?
They were in this area behind the house.
Grassy area, or?
It's not grass now, I don't think. They said they would plant grass, right?
Right, that they're planning to plant some grass here. This is, this is the improvements that they would like to have.
Where's the food handled?
Little rectangle just to the left.
And do you know who lives in the house?
The owner lives in the house.
Well, now, it says here that there were problems that there was no owner on site. Was that just a few times?
We'll get some clarification from Nora.
Okay, when she speaks, thank you.
Yes. Okay, environmental health does have requirements to, that the vendors that have proper licenses, if there's, they might have to improve the water situation if they had more events, but as I said, limited to 12 events during the year.
So there are no requirements for the water?
Right, just a domestic well, using the domestic well. No species of concern, no waterways and no wetlands on the subject site. It's determined to be categorically exempt from SEQA under Section 15304 pertaining to minor adulterations of land. It's considered a minor short-term use of land, having negligible or no permanent effects on the environment. The memo that I provided you points out, responds to Sheriff's Department concerns, and my point, I focused on the conditions of approval. Their noise is limited to no more than 60 decibels at the site boundaries, not permitted between 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. That's more stringent than we usually require. We usually let it be up to 65 decibels, up to 11:00 p.m. Conditions of approval for alcohol. The applicant shall secure permits from the ABC and comply with all regulations. The applicant is required to provide a cell phone number to owners and tenants within 300 feet and be available to answer any calls, and will defer the question about her being available on the site and basically supervising to make sure that people are, that the DJ is paying attention and reducing the noise if it's getting too loud. They must also provide uniform security, one guard for every 100 people if alcohol is being served. And we're adding the condition that those guards must not just be hanging out down by the gate, they should be circulating within the assemblage's area. We also specified then a minimum of one portable toilet per 50 people and one toilet with an approved hand wash sink, a hot water dispenser. At least one ADA accessible portable toilet for each assemblage. And staff's brief, well, not the two-minute brief presentation, but that ends. Do you have any questions for me, any more questions for me, or would you like to talk with the applicant, Nora Baca?
On the 12 events, I imagine that this particular type don't carry on from Saturday to Sunday.
No, this is usually, yeah, it's a wedding. It's a party, so it's one day.
Does any of the commission have any other questions of April before I open the hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing now, and if you would like to speak in support of your project, please come up and give your name and address. Sorry, we had a little protocol we have to follow, so.
No problem. Good morning, everyone. Nora Baca, 22803, Road 196 in Lindsay. As stated in the memorandum that April just handed out from the Sheriff's Department, we've made a lot of modifications. Two years ago, we started having family gatherings, family parties, where we have a big family, so that's how we started. There was complaints about noise. There was complaints about noise, um, which, like I said, we've made modifications. We've tried to keep, um, boundaries. We didn't know we needed a permit when we were having our private parties. That's why it says here on the memo that, um, we were, we didn't know basically the requirements for this kind of special use permit. Um, now that we've applied, the sheriff's department informed us that we needed to request the special use permit, uh, even if it was a private family gathering. So that's what we did. Um, that's where we learned about the decibels being around, making sure we had, we followed steps so that we could be in compliance. Um, like I said, we've made many improvements. We've surrounded the area. We have guards at the front gate. We have guards, security guards walking through the vehicles just to make sure that whoever's there is safe. Um, also with the beverages, um, we've stationed a security guard right at the bar. Um, that way he's making sure that there's no alcohol being given to minors. Only adults are able to get the beverages, the alcoholic beverages. Um, also, we, um, are just providing the venue. We don't provide any food. That's why April stated that we didn't need a, a food permit, because we're not providing food, we're not preparing food on site. Um, whoever wants to run our facility has to bring everything into the site. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, tell me a little bit about your gravel road for access.
Okay, we, um, when we, when my parents purchased the property, which was ten years ago, almost ten years ago, it did have a pavement road that has been going down. Uh, we've made an improvement to the entrance of the road. We've also, um, we do water it, um, constantly throughout the event. Um, the dust that's been pulled, it's minimal. It stated there's a hundred and seventy cars that come every, that's just an estimate. There's usually not that many vehicles coming in and out. We do have two entrances and like I said, we do, there's only one area where there's more dust coming out. But like I said, we, throughout the event, we go back and forth and we water it down. There's also, vehicles are not allowed to go past like the five, ten mile mark. Also to keep the, the dust level down.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this project? Thank you, Ms. Baca. Nope? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Do we have, uh, any other comments by the commission?
Nancy, you're the street blower. Looks like there's trees on that south side of the thing there. What, uh, what impacts might they expect to receive?
Well, it's a, it's a hu, the dust is a huge concern, concern. Uh, she said they're watering intermittently. Well, if I was a guest, it would be pretty hard to water the road when guests were coming in and out. Uh, I don't know how they can keep watering unless they just stopped everything. But, um, this is zoned for ag and, um, dust causes mites. It's not just trees, though. I mean, cotton is very, it's a huge concern for the dust. I can't imagine how that can be adequate myself. That's, that's my thought on it. Like, I don't see how just watering can be adequate for a dirt entrance.
I agree.
Les, Les, I don't see, uh, that, using that, that much water to keep dust down as a beneficial use of water in a drought. I just, I think there's better ways to, I think we need a more permanent, uh, type of asphalt probably approach, uh, or-
To the chair, uh, what I suggested this time, uh, condition be added, that they would use a oil base, but, but one partial standard would be free to, to aggregate bases with oil.
With oil on top.
Use one partial standard and make sure that they comply with that. And that would be oil would increase the dust.
So that'll work great, you think that's gonna be fine?
Or, or there's actually even that other desk control, um-
Their stabilizer.
Right, the stabilizer, I'm sorry, I couldn't come up with the word, instead of oil. But I think something needs to be done besides just watering the dirt. I, I can't see how that can be adequate for that much traffic. Is that a possibility to put that? Okay.
Given the history that, uh, twelve events a year is too many, so I'd like to see four. And then if they do well, then come back in a year. But, uh, I'm a city boy, so that's my vision.
Try to go with the four makes the larger, make improvements as far as cost.
Oh, definitely.
You know, I think there were some issues before, but I think they were uninformed as to what, what they needed to do. I think they're, uh, have been informed now. I think they're probab, it sounds like Mrs. Baca's willing and able to make some modifications to, to stay in compliance. And I, I would say let's give them a chance and they can, we can always have them come back. We can send, uh, code enforcement out there and they can, we can bring them back.
Well, it sounds to me like the, um, neighbors are doing a pretty good job of calling and letting them know when something's going on, which I appreciate. I think that's a good thing. So I'm thinking that we will be hearing from the sheriff's department, right? If there are more complaints on this?
Uh, correct, and like I, uh, April stated, the conditions were based on the sheriff's comments. If we're more direct comments, we initially know, so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, do we wanna, do we wanna add some kind of review process in the conditions? Is that appropriate?
You could add a annualized review, uh, so you can have. But generally how these things work now is if there is a complaint, there will be, uh, a meeting between the neighbors and before it ever comes back to you.
Okay.
Um, and due to COVID, fortunately, most of these things do work out. So, that's why I'm, I'm, if we have anybody that-
Right.
So if we add the road condition, uh, we can also request that it be inspected by the county before the permit is issued?
Good with that?
About the food issues, you know, they take no responsibility and they bring the food in. Uh, how, how, how does the county ensure that this is a, uh, clean place to serve food?
Well, Bill, actually, most facilities do not take responsibility for the food. I, ones that we've used have not. If you're renting out the facility, you aren't required to have a health permit. It's the, whoever is doing the food for that event.
The cater, excuse me, to the chair, uh, the cater will be responsible or, or if they were to have some sort of a mobile vendor, it could be a mobile vendor, their license, it would be, uh, responsible.
But if they know facilities for washing or preparation or, you know, just serving food, there's, there's no structures for that. There's just a bar. And the alcohol, it sterilizes itself, so.
That sure makes our Lions Club look pretty compliant of all the stuff they have to do.
I was gonna file to play the Lions Club.
Okay, can, do we have a motion? For this special use permit number PSP fifteen dash zero zero seven?
Yes, I'll make a motion here that we, uh, approve a categorical exemption consistent with, uh, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines, um, pursuant to the minor altercation, al- alteration.
It is a minor alter-
Minor alteration of land and conditionally approved, uh, special use permit number PSP fifteen dash zero zero seven with the added modification for, uh, uh, the, the road and county inspection.
I'll second.
Thank you. Vote, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Perniano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Madam Chair?
Motion approved, thank you.
Just one quick comment.
Yes.
My no vote is, is that I have concern about, uh, alcohol being served to minors, wedding events. And I'm an offender as a child, you know, it's easy to get whatever being served by, from a relative. And I'm concerned about the dust and the noise. And so just wanna let the applicant know that if it comes back, uh, I'm going to have a hard attitude about the continued use. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlatch, for your comments. I think the entire commission feels like that, so, thank you very much. Okay, we have, now I've lost my place. Five C, minor modification, M I M sixteen dash zero one zero. Mr. Doug Reynolds of Santa Fe Aggregates and Mr. Jordan Main of Compass Land Group. This is a petition for a minor modification of, to surface mining and reclamation permit. And we have Chuck, those, biz, 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 biz.
Przybalski.
Sorry.
That's okay. Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, as, that's right, I need a few more, actually. Uh, Chuck Przybalski, County Wide Planning Division. Uh, today before you have a minor modification for Santa Fe Aggregates. A little project background, uh, this is on the Quea River Rock Mine Site. This mine has been, uh, active since the early sixties and probably before that. The actual mine amendment was in seventy-nine. This particular site we're talking today is a twenty-acre site parcel just north of the actual mine site. And in two thousand and one, uh, the applicant, uh, applied for a storage area for this, which is for material and heavy vehicles. The site is also already included in the reclamation plan for the mine site as grazing land. And, uh, it's located to the southwest of Woodlake, California. This is a particular map of the site right here. Uh, Woodlake up to the northwest, uh, Lake Quea to the east. And, uh, you can see the project site just north of the actual mine itself, which is the light green. This is the project site itself. As you can see, the site is currently used as stockpile and heavy equipment. There's no, uh, farming on it currently. And the actual excavation portion of the, uh, mine itself, uh, is just south of the project site. Uh, the, the applicant is actually in this area right now, uh, digging. So they would just expand to this little, uh, twenty-acre portion to the north here. Uh, it's expanding the mine activity to the twenty acres as I just discussed. Uh, this minor modification would adjust the contours of the reclamation plan. They're gonna dig about thirty feet, which is above the groundwater, so they're not gonna get into the groundwater. So the reclamation plan already covers the site and this, since they're digging thirty feet down, this would just modify the reclamation plan for the, the slopes for the, uh, the digging down of the, of the mine.
So Chuck, they weren't gonna dig down prior to this modification?
Correct, for this twenty site, um, it will just use for storage.
Right.
And now they're gonna go into it, so they're gonna dig down about thirty feet, continuing on from the existing site. And yes, so it would be, this would be contoured down.
So they're, there's, they're going after the aggregate there, is that what's going on?
Correct. Yes.
Now, the, the site to the north, that, that's already been, that's already been mined? That site right there?
This is a part of the same parcel, actually, it's forty acres. This is in, uh, I believe agricultural production or it's vacant land right now.
Okay.
That portion will not be a part of this project. Only the twenty acre, this, this southern portion right here. So you can see the excavation portion, which they're digging in right now. They're just kinda on into this area right here.
So they never were planning to excavate the aggregate on that twenty-acre piece there, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Basically, they're trying to expand the mine a little bit.
Right, what's, what's going on right now, they have another mine site, Quea River Rock South, which was approved by the planning commission and they're preparing to go into that mine site in the near future. Uh, but while they're moving their, the, the materials and the business decision to actually start mining in that area, um, they, they want a few more years of, of mine on this particular site. This site is almost excavated, uh, out the whole set, uh, hundred, the whole hundred and twenty-five acres. And so this will give them a, a few more years before they go south, the other mine site.
The existing pit, will they start reclamation of that as they do the other?
Actually, it's, uh, most of the pit itself is already under reclamation. They, I would say, I wanna say seventy percent of the whole site has already been reclaimed. Uh, and it, and most of the digging right now is, like I said, in just this, probably about forty acres of the site.
Will be any need to de-water?
No, most of the ground, uh, is, is above the groundwater.
So Chuck, if I heard you right, so the area to the south of the subject site here has already been mined and it's in the process of reclamation?
Correct, right here. So-
How, how much, how much do they infill that, how?
How much do they infill?
Yeah, how much do the backfill into the existing site? Do they, are we bringing up below, above the groundwater level?
They do have a washing site, so there is a pond down to the southwest of this area, um, for the water. But the actual digging, it doesn't get that low into the groundwater. I've been out there several times and where they're digging at and the depth that they go to, there's no water.
We originally had a field trip, I don't know if anybody was on the planning commission to that site, which was very interesting. Are they still doing asphalt there?
Probably twelve at that time that you went.
Oh, I'm sure you were, yeah. Do they still do asphalt? They have a batch plant there?
Uh, I know they have the, uh, the machinery for the gra, the gravel. I'm not sure about the asphalt, uh, batch plant, uh, itself. Can, uh, ask, the, the applicant, Doug Reynolds is here and also Jordan Main.
Okay, I just, I'd need an update, 'cause it's been, I don't know, fifteen years since I was there.
Yeah, I was last there last November on this site. We good?
Our commission, too, there's an existing pit that's reclaimed. Beautiful water site, almost contiguous to this site, so.
Right side on the river. Okay, continuing on. Again, the, uh, this is mainly for the contours, for the reclamation plan, which is already included in the, uh, the two thousand and one, uh, mine permit. Uh, this will not modify any production levels. As I said, this is the end cycle for this particular mine, so the trucks are already there, the mining is already happening. And this will just include the twenty acres to the north that's used as heavy equipment. This, uh, you can see the, uh, the twenty acres again, there's, this gray area is gonna be a berm. And then this hatched area here is gonna be the two-to-one slopes coming down into the, uh, the site itself. Uh, this shows the reclamation plan with the green area in the middle being just grazing land when it's done, at approximately thirty-foot depth. So minor modifications, this is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance as are allowed, mines are allowed in agricultural areas with the use permit. The use permit was obtained in nineteen seventy-nine and in two thousand and one. There's no violations on the particular project. The applicant prepared an addendum for the project in accordance with SEQA, finding no significant impacts. The modification will add twenty acres to the already existing hundred and twenty-five acre site. And the site is already included in the reclamation plan. And as a part of this project, no substantial changes to the approved conditions for the original mine site, which is seventy-nine oh four and PMR zero one zero zero two. Uh, normally minor modifications are not, uh, they're signed by the director itself. However, mines are very controversial to the public. So we sent out agency notification, including OMR in April. Uh, and also we notified the surrounding property owners within three hundred feet. Uh, we contacted the Farm Bureau. And, uh, therefore, we are here for this public hearing with a decision by the Planning Commission, just to keep it, uh, open. So going to the addendum, there's a negative declaration approved December nineteenth, two thousand and one. It was prepared pursuant to section fifteen one sixty-four, which is any new additional impacts than was previously addressed. They have to be significant. And, uh, the addendum addressed all main resource categories found in appendix G. That's where you get all the listing, aesthetics, biologic, air quality, et cetera. Um, and the applicant, uh, prepared and updated biological assessment and soil conservation report for the addendum. And with that, the recommendation for the Planning Commission is to approve the addendum to the initial study negative declaration of October two thousand and one and approve the minor modification number M I M sixteen dash ten. Answer any questions the commission may have. And also, as I mentioned before, the applicant is available also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, one question?
Yes, please.
After this is, assuming this goes through here and all, and they do excavate this down some thirty feet, and it's reclaimed in the, in the future to pasture, irrigated pasture, right? Is, is this because of the location and because of, of, of the depth of this thing? Could this be, uh, a recharge area, uh, in, in years of, of abundant water?
Uh, that's a good question. Recharge is a very sensitive topic out there. They have the CMX mine right next to the, uh, the area and it's full of water. Uh, and there's a question between recharge and, you know, water and wells. So, um, there's a lot of areas next to it that could be used for, uh, recharge. This particular basin, I don't know if it will be used for recharge. It could. But the, uh, I don't, I don't know that answer.
Well, I'd just like to have places available, uh, so if, and we ever get a, a year with a very abundant rainfall, if we can capture it before it goes to the ocean or it goes down to the, to Lori Lake bottom.
Correct. Being a two to one slope like that, if it rains very heavily, it will most likely pull down there. But I, I do not know that for sure.
Uh, yeah, I just don't want this, yeah, I'd like to see the water coming from more than just the banks. Fill that thing up thirty feet.
Fill that thing up.
'Cause that water's gonna go somewhere.
Correct.
Eventually, it's gonna get down and we've gotta do something to, to recharge our overdraft situation and...
So there is a...
I don't know if it's feasible or not.
Close to the river too.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't have a good aerial photo of it, but the CMX mine, which is located just to the east, have several lakes that are full of, uh, of groundwater essentially. And we've had, uh, several problems with the, uh, Stillwell Mine Site because of well water.
If, if I'm mistaken, Chair, uh, when, when we do our groundwater sustainability plan, they'll, they'll, they'll be identifying those areas that are available for recharge. So they'd be looking at all this, all appropriate ways to, to utilize, uh, recharge facilities. So that, that would certainly be looked at in my opinion. Uh, I would just like to mention too, I have a chance, that, that we wanted to do this, uh, with as much transparency as possible, because as, as Chuck said, minor modifications usually go through planning and it's administratively handled. But we wanted to bring it to the Planning Commission, uh, for the full transparency. And I would suggest that, and I believe that we, we have no comments, uh, back, uh, during our outreach. There may be people in the audience that wanna address it today. Uh, so therefore, I would suggest that, uh, when you're done, Chuck, if you could pull up the, uh, Google Earth or, or the maps and the satellite, so we can get an overall view, uh, of, of a shot of distance here.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Is, any other questions by the commission at this time? Okay, I will open the public hearing for minor modification M I M sixteen dash zero one zero. If we have any comments, normally we have comments by the applicant first. If that's, if, maybe they don't, I don't know if he wants to make any comments. I'm sorry, I should've said that. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Doug Reynolds, Plant Manager of Santa Fe Aggregates. Post office box five one five, Woodlake, California, nine three two eight six. First of all, I'd like to thank Chuck for the presentation. I think he laid it out fairly well. Very, very quickly, basically, we're going with this project to give us a little more time for, for the planning and development of our Cuiya South property that Chuck spoke to. Mr. Whitlich, you asked about the asphalt plant. It has been dismantled and removed. Do you have any questions for me?
I'm just always curious about the reclamation process. The two and one is a fairly steep slope. And I understand you take the stuff that you took off the top and you push it back in the pit. But that's still a fairly steep lake. And, uh, though you call it grazing, but it's, it's, yeah, it's not, it's still steep, two and one.
Two to one is...
I'm not against it, but I'm just, just curious.
I'm sorry?
I'm not against it. I'm just curious about what it's gonna look like. 'Cause we've never had one, since I've been a planning commissioner, that we actually saw the end results. All I ever seen is these deep gaping holes afterwards, so, full of water.
Well, actually, um, two to one slopes are very common for non-lakes. When you put water in, actually, the natural occurring is actually goes to one and a half to one below the water level. Even if you put, excuse me, if you put it on a three to one, it will go to a one and a half to one underwater. It's, it's just what happens. Two to one, as I said, is quite common. It's actually more slanted than a lot of, most of the non-aggregate reclamation ponds, i.e. irrigation districts and stuff are normally steeper than that.
That, that's all I needed. I'm just curious, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Good morning. Now, yes, I'm so sorry. Please state your name and address.
Uh, I'm Karen Callahan, and my physical address is two three two five one A Lomitas Drive, which, um, touches upon the area that we're talking about. And my comments today are mostly questions and concerns, so I'll just go down what I've been thinking about. First of all, it has to do with the notice that we received, and no one has reached out to us prior to this, receiving this notice that I'm aware of. Um, just to mention that. This notice that was sent to me, and the ones, my husband also got one, was mailed on Friday, June tenth of this year. I received it on Monday, June thirteenth. And this has not given us the ten days that we've needed to research and review the information for this amendment. And in the notice, it says that, um, uh, where is it here? Uh, ten days, the review period is ten days until Monday, June twentieth at five P.M. So we had several days less than the ten, and we definitely needed more time. First of all, I'd like to know exactly how many people in our area have actually been sent a notice and when they received theirs, because I would like to talk to them about this project, and I haven't had time to do so, to look up their specific names and addresses, so I could go and talk to them. Next, I don't really think that changing a parking lot, an approved parking lot into a sand and gravel mine can qualify as minor modification. When the permit was granted fifteen years ago, the permitted area was approved for parking because there wouldn't be any digging in that area. And it looks and sounds like they're already digging there. Uh, I went out last night and took pictures, but I wasn't able to prepare them for today. So I'm, I'm kinda wondering, is this hearing then just a formality, if they're already, uh, working in the area? Next, the permit to be modified, PMR zero one zero zero two, which was adopted in two thousand and one, fifteen years ago. And the conditions in terms of that per, permit that Mr. Reynolds mentioned, according to this application, would be the same. But it, it says no substantial changes. So if there are changes, they haven't been spelled out. And what are these terms and conditions? They're not mentioned in the application. And I'm wondering if any of you could tell me? What are the, the conditions? What are the terms of that permit that was approved fifteen years ago? So this is not enough information, really, to give you to make a, a decision at this time. It doesn't keep you adequately informed. And it also allows for further unforeseen misconduct by a permitee with no one being held accountable for reporting and monitoring. My next point is the casual mention and skimming over of important details in this application is a great concern to me, um, such as the actual area to be dug up, creating a pit thirty feet deep. But it might not be thirty feet deep. It might be thirty-five feet deep. Both numbers are used, thirty, thirty feet deep and thirty-five feet deep in the application. And plus or minus twenty acres. They're, they're mentioning that there's twenty acres there. However, the exact parcel is more like thirty-three, almost thirty-four acres. And, um, the plan is to remove up to one million tons of aggregate or, or natural resources. And exactly how big is plus or minus twenty acres? According to the submitted document, the actual size of the permitted, and I didn't get the rest, is going to be, maybe it'll be twenty acres, but maybe it'll be more, because they have, uh, more area. I would, uh, like to know also who is responsible for monitoring the terms and provisions of approved permits and ensuring that the permitee is upholding the terms of that permit? And who do they report to? And I heard that you did make a, take a field trip, but that was quite a while back and, and probably before they started. They were probably using it as a parking lot when you were out there. And when you approve a permit, and the permit specifies actions that the permitee is not allowed to, to do, such as to harm or damage domestic wells, why has this been allowed to happen in the past, not once, but twice, on two different permits that have been approved? Um, the county has failed to monitor or enforce the terms of these two previous permits, allowing the permitee to do grievous harms to farms and farm families. And I'm speaking of the Stillwell Project, which I'm sure is fresh in your mind, and PMR zero one zero zero two, which was fifteen years ago. The permitees have done permanent damage to our well and to others in our area, our household wells, without being really held accountable. And this affects property values and the ability to farm the land, as it should be, because with no water, there's no farming. And who is gonna buy a piece of property that's been cut off from its water source? So while they're recharging trench, and you were mentioning recharge, that seems to be a, a term you're familiar with, and one has been installed, um, we call it a moat, um, to mitigate the damage that was done by the, the permitee, um, by damming or cutting off our wells from the aquifer. And keeping the moat filled with water, which recharges the wells, is uncertain. And the reason I'm mentioning this is that the moat associated with PMR zero one zero zero two, and that's the permit that was fifteen years ago, was not being filled in May of this year. So last month, no water was being put in that recharge moat. And, um, the group, we have a group of people who come and monitor the, the moat every month, and they check the wells. The fact that they weren't putting water in the moat in May, um, affected our well. It dropped from seventeen feet to twenty-two feet in depth immediately. So I would like to know who puts water in the moat or cuts it off, and why, on a whim, they can stop putting water in it, which immediately affects our well. The persons who currently have been monitoring this moat and the wells consist of one person from the permite, permitee company, and it might be Mr. Reynolds, a worker from that same company, a farmer who lives in our permit area, and someone from the ditch company. No one from RMC or this commission is, has ever been out there that I know. Maybe once in a while, maybe. So who is exactly responsible for ensuring the terms of these, of the original permit, zero one zero zero two, are being adhered to? And how does the Planning Commission learn of violations of these permit requirements? Who inspects and confirms adherence to terms of the permit? And how is it monitored? Simply on the word of the permitee? Isn't this a bit like letting the fox guard the hen house? If monitoring is being done, then how has it happened that on two occasions violations have occurred, doing severe and irreparable damage to domestic wells and properties? And the other comment, and my last one, is, um, in the description of the property, and you, I would like you to show me on the map, it says that this location is southwest of Woodlake. It isn't. It's southeast of Woodlake. Okay. So the map is wrong and the information for the address is wrong, right? 'Cause it's right by our house and we're way east of Woodlake. Yeah.
The map's right. It doesn't change. It's the...
Well, I guess that's true. Yeah, I, I guess when you looked at it, actually, when you saw that green area, you saw that it was east, east of Woodlake. But thank you very much for your, um, time, and I have copies of my comments, if you would like them.
Thank you.
Vilma?
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments?
Information?
Please, if you could limit your, your comments to any new information that you have.
My name is Frank Callahan. I live at two three two four one Lomitas Drive. And the property my wife was talking about, I'll also be addressing some. My main, uh, question here is the reclamation, when they backfill with the overburden, how are we guaranteed that the, the water can go through? It's actually an earthen dam. We have it at the, uh, south end of our property. And the water was, we've got there, the water will not go through the, uh, overburden or the, wait. Also, also, when they backfill their, uh, twenty acres or whatever it's gonna be, what's gonna happen to the houses to the north when those wells are shut, are shut down? And a comment also was that he, uh, they have dug down thirty-five feet and there's no water. But they're sand and gravel, so there has been water. And probably the reason there's no water is because they're pumping it out over to the south of the pond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Julie Bigum. I live at two...
Because I cannot ask the question directly, I'll ask you, is this Mr. Piszbowski, does he work for the county, or does he work for the gravel mine?
He works for the county.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Anyway, before I get to my comments, a few things that he said I wanted to touch upon. When you fill in the return, or the basin with mining tails, and you were talking about, is it going to recharge? Water does not go through the mining tailings, so it's not going to just recharge like, like they were saying. The other thing is that I have talked to Mr. Spata regarding the Queer River Rock Company to the south, which they had permitted. It was one of the biggest cases that the board supervisors had at that time. We went to court, we lost, the mine was approved, but it was approved in 2007. And I have a letter from Mike Spata for the Stillwell project that says if a mine has been, is not been productive, it's deemed idle after a year. I have been trying to get Mr. Spata to look into it, and he has promised me he would, but I have not heard back from him. So that mine across the river needs to be deemed idle. And if they want to plan new things, they need to start with another EIR, because it's also a different mining group. Okay. And also, I've got just two pictures that I wanted to show you after my comments, and I brought my magnifying glass. And I would like you to take a look at it, and then you could fight over who's going to get the pictures, because I only brought one copy. Okay, dear planning commissioners, excuse me. Your decision on the above-mentioned project needs to be postponed and the comment period extended because there are so many unanswered questions, and all facts need to be revealed in order to, for you to make an informed decision. And Chuck wasn't in to answer my questions on Monday, the 20th. He did return my call this morning, as I was on my way here. Without answers to my questions, my comments are incomplete. In addition, Chuck was left a message by the representative from the state Board of Reclamation on Monday. His questions aren't answered, and I am awaiting his feedback. This is not a minor modification. This is a new gravel mine, no matter how close to the existing mine or whether it is on the same property. Even though RMA gave us 140 pages, I ask, where's the beef? Looking at the site from Google Earth dated 3/3015, I see things that are disturbing. What's this? What are they doing here? Look here, there appears to be truck fluid on the ground. I got pictures of this. And if this is what I am seeing, then there is a contamination of the site and possibly the groundwater. Are they not required to have cement slab for their vehicles so leakage from their equipment does not contaminate the area? I also believe that the containment slabs need to have sides on them so that the contaminants do not run off. Because Google Earth pictures are a year old, we have no idea what the site looks like today. I ask, are they mining without a permit now or outside of the permitted, or outside of what is permitted? It appears to me that they are. And if they had begun mining without a permit, isn't that a violation? Some quick, just some quick comments regarding the property. In the notification, it says plus or minus twenty acres to be mined is open-ended. Can we have an exact acreage to be mined? And where exactly will this be placed? On the 33.9 acre, acre parking lot. Regarding the water, what is the depth of the groundwater at the site? And how far down is bedrock? It is, is it not possible that once you get close to reaching groundwater, that once the weight of the earth is removed, water may start bubbling up due to the lack of pressure? I hope I made that clear. And in the next five years, hopefully, we'll get more rain changing the level of the groundwater. How will this affect the mine? And it will turn the future pasture into another lake. Turning groundwater into surface water is wrong. Okay, then they will be using up to 10,000 gallons of water a day for dust control. Where will that water come from? Let's see, 10,000 gallons per day for five years. That's 70,000 gallons of water a week, times 52 weeks, times five years. And that equals 18,200,000 gallons of water. We are told we're in a drought, and that every drop counts. And if you folks ever drive, you will see the signs, I'm assuming by the county, severe drought, you know, every drop counts. Regarding dust, dust is not a grower's friend. Dust on ag crops or houseplants cause lack of photosynthesis and attracts pest insects. The reclamation, in the package of information, it states that reclamation contours will be changed, but just a little. This not only says nothing, but allows them all sorts of leeway. And this is not right, and I can't imagine that the county thinks it's okay either. I'm almost done. The operation, the hours of operation and noise needs to be restricted. I could hear the operation of the mine from my home. I live about a mile and a half as the crow flies. And I'm sure my neighbors would call the police if I were making noise at 60 decibels at midnight. The financial obligations and bonds, where are they? In closing, I once again request more time to submit comments on this project. As you have heard here today, there are many unanswered questions. This project is not minor. It is way more complex than RMA has presented. And we are now seeing the devastation effects of the many gravel mines in this area, which has compromised families' health, safety, and welfare. Thank you very much. Now, I will get to the two pictures. I will pass around my magnifying glass. I need this back. These are from Google Earth. And one of them is of mining that I don't know if it's permitted or not. The other one, I have circled areas of it looks like fluid from vehicles. I don't know what it is, if it's oil or brake fluid or whatever the case may be. And that's a definite contamination site, I believe.
And these are of the area that we're speaking of today?
Yes. This is of Google Earth, and these pictures are 3/3015. That's as far as they go.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. And I've also have copies of my comments.
Okay.
Are there, and I'll stand up here in case there's any questions regarding the pictures.
I had a question, and probably any of the opponents could answer this, but in the past, with the Woodlake operation, specifically this one we're talking about right now, have you experienced any impacts to you personally, to your property, or that you know and can be documented?
The mine is farther away from me, so I say no, except for nuisance sounds. But I am well aware of when you work in a gravel mine and you put up slurry walls, that you are averting and moving around blocking the water. I'm very, I'm very knowledgeable on that, because I did do the research on the, the mine across the waterway that we had talked about beginning.
And has the water table dropped in your specific well that you know of?
No. But I am far enough away. If I lived very close to that, I would say that people's wells are dropping. And we also know what happened at the Stillwell property.
Right.
Ms., Ms. Bigum, are the, are the berm's already up?
For, for what?
For this 20 acres. There's supposed to be a berm on the backside of it. Is that already up?
No, and, and you know what? I was, to be honest with you, I was, I wasn't notified. The county knows that I'm very interested in these things. I have not been very familiar with this project going in. It was the only, the latter one. And so whether the berm's are there or not, I don't know, but Karen can probably answer that, because...
I can't, I took a picture of...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You have to come back up and, yes, you have to.
I may interrupt really quick. The berm's are not there yet. This will be a part of the project.
There's a berm that goes in.
Can't speak, I'm sorry. You need to, sorry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Bigum. Do you have any other comments? Please, if you could limit it to new information. Thank you.
I wanted to answer John's question, the, because Frank...
Catherine Doe.
Oh, sorry.
Address, please.
Thank you, Bill. Catherine Doe. I live in Exeter. In answer to John's...
Your address, please.
Address, Catherine.
30905 Road 216 in Exeter.
Thank you.
Okay. In answer to John's question, because with Frank, Frank, and I know George Clausen has testified in front of you guys, their wells went down so much, they couldn't irrigate their crops anymore. And that was like, the mines interfere with the ability to farm. Now, this one, as Frank said, and I think Karen did too, the water level in that area is at 15 feet. So I don't know why, or I don't understand, they did, they're going to dig down to 30 feet, they're going to be in the aquifer. And when they do dig into there, there is going to be a pond, and there is going to be evaporation. And that was the one thing that, you guys are all familiar with Dennis Keller, the big water guy. That's why he was against one of these permits, and he came and testified, but it was years ago, saying you can't make these ponds anymore. And this was before the drought, because the evaporation is crazy. And like Julie said, when you make groundwater into, when you make aquifer water, underground water into above groundwater, that is ridiculous. That's a huge problem. Okay, and then the reclamation, the problem, what blocked the wells was the reclamation, because they're digging out loam, they're digging out tunga sand, and you can't recreate that. Like, if they could recreate that, maybe that would be a possibility, but they can't recreate it. The water does not flow through, and their wells will be permanently damaged. And they have to rely, like Karen said, on somebody filling the recharge trench. And it sounds like their Reynolds are local, so that's a little bit better, but we all know what happened to those four homes, because C-Mex, you know, you guys were the ones doing that in the county. Those homes are worthless now, because they've got, their water has been completely blocked, and will be when it's reclaimed, that Stillwell mine thing. Anyway, and so I wanted to say that for George, because George is not here, he's out of the country, but his well, just like Frank's, has gone down because of what they've been, the mine that's really close to the area that you guys are looking at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair, I wonder if Mr. Reynolds would like a rebuttal?
I was just going to ask if Mr. Reynolds had any rebuttal to any of the comments, if you have any comments, to their comments. I saw you making notes, so...
I could comment for a long time, but I won't. I would like to, couple of points is, one, we have not, we are not mining that part, that 20 acres. It is bermed, and it is a maximum 20 acres or less. It's not 20 acres or more. The current depth of mining at our plant, we're down in some places 45 feet, which is within our existing permit, and we are not in the water table. As far as the permit compliance goes, it's handled by the county. Chuck comes out, checks all, checks all our conditions. We are also inspected by the Water Resource Control Board, hazmat for both the county and the state, air quality control district, Mine Safety and Health Administration, occupation and self-occupation and Health Administration, and a whole bunch more. As far as environmental or diesel spills on the property, if that were to happen, they were cleaned up immediately. We have our emergency response system, which we have to turn in annually to the state of California. It is inspected. We are inspected, and the plan is approved. We do not run the plan at midnight, and there's no place off the property that can have more, that has 60 decibel sound levels. That's, that's tested twice a year also. We use magnesium chloride on our roads, which is what you guys were discussing earlier as far, I think you called it road oil, magnesium chloride. We have nothing to do with the Stillwell property. And do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
What hour, what hours do you operate, then?
Right now, we are running from, operating the plant from 5 to 3:30, Monday through Thursday, and 5 to 2 on Friday, which means the plant starts at about 5:30 in the morning.
To the chair, just one clarification. What kind of outreach did you conduct? What kind of outreach have you conducted as far as meeting with people in regards to the project?
I met with the Farm Bureau, placed some phone calls to, I did, I did not call the Callahans or Ms. Bigum. There were some other people, gentleman who owns Lemon Cove Granite, Mr. Karns, Karen's, did not return my phone call. I think that was everything we had discussed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Julie Bigum, 20488 Avenue 322. I would like to respond. In the paperwork that you have, and I can't point it out to you exactly, I could, it says that they will, this 20 acres that they're going to mine, they will go at 70 decibels between, I think it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then they will drop down to 60 decibels from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So he's either mistaken, or the paperwork is wrong. And I just wanted to point that out.
And could it possibly be that that is the possible times? That they, it's in the permit that those are the possible times?
It's, it's a possible times, but once it's, it's okayed, excuse, once it's passed, then it's carte blanche, because you have passed such a thing, whether they say they're not going to mine at night or not. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it did say that. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. Commission, do you have any comments?
I think we've got enough information yet. I think there were some legitimate questions that need to be responded to by the county on this, so I think we need to continue.
Some of the issues I've heard 15 years ago, and a lot of testimony, you know, so, you know, they're mixing, mixing things up here. We're only dealing with the 20 acres and not Stillwell and groundwater, quality of water, so I'd like to hear staff's comments.
And I, I would just like to ask what signifies a minor modification? And I'm sure there is criteria for that. And I would just like to know what makes a minor modification?
Well, one thing that's changed significantly since 2001 is the impact on water. So maybe there is something we need to... on water, so maybe there is something we need to consider in terms of how much water is gonna be used to do what out there. I think that's an important question.
Chair?
Yes.
I may add, just for the record, as far as, just to clarify a few pieces, as far as notification, we sent out back in April, I believe, notification with the same list of people that received this, this subsequent one for the public hearing. So we did that outreach early on, we did not receive any comments, we received a comment from Paltrans, said they had no, no comment on the matter, we received a comment from, a letter, an email from State Office of Mines, and they said they had no comment on it as well, just for the record on that. It does appear that they're mixing projects and, and concerns with others that might not be associated with this whatsoever. So we're prepared, staff is prepared to come back and clarify and make, make clarification of these matters, I just think that the proper notification has been done above and beyond what we normally do.
I might clarify that there are new people, that Mike Spata is in a different position, and so they should contact Aaron Brock, they should contact you, who should they contact?
Well, initially, the phone call, the reject, should also, we did not get a response to the debate that lies up for Mr. Washington. Ultimately, everything should be directed towards Mr. Washington, as far as Mike Spata being there anymore. As far as the minor modification, as long as it's not a substantial change, not requiring necessarily new conditions, we can do minor modification now, so some minor adjustments or tweaks to the condition that's the reason we brought up for this commission, nonability transparency aspect of this. So overall, you know, we did contact, only marked back in April, and have not heard back from them yet, as far as whether they're with the annual contracts. Other minor modifications have been done on, through precedent, through other smart permits, have been done in the same manner as a minor modification. So this is not precedent setting, the only precedent setting aspect to it is our transparency incoming for the minor modification.
I'd also like to add that there are no significant changes in operation, I mean, the conditions that are, that are in place will continue on, so hours of operation, noise, all of those things will, will remain as, as permitted right now. But this is solely doing, is adding that up to twenty acre portion that is currently being for partnering and overburdening my desk or something, to be mined, so that gives them enough time, because as we know, this permit is gradually closing out, this extends the life of the mine for a few more years while they get the new facility up and going.
Back to minor modification again, this twenty acres, what percentage is this of the, of the permitted area from the fifteen years ago?
I believe the overall site is a hundred and twenty-five acres plus, something like that.
Was this area always...
It's part of the...
Part of the permit?
Part of the reclamation plan, it's part of the...
So they were planning on excavating this area fifteen years ago?
No, excavating was not part of the...
That's what's changing.
So this area wasn't studied at that, in that time, was it not, I assume, for, for effects of excavating it?
Well, that's one aspect in that was the clarification in the biological report, was that we freshened up, decided to make sure there is no additional impact or effects from this twenty acre area as to requiring for more than minor modification or addendum to the declaration. So there's those, we have substantial evidence in the record to support the addendum to negative declaration, and support the minor modification, which is less than twenty percent of the total project site, without having to redo a new smart permit to Department of Conservation. And can you just add, well, the portion of the site is already being scrubbed, scrubbed as part of the project, it's not like this is new proven land, it's being, you know, excavated, it's already part of the site, it's part of the facility.
So the definition of minor modification, the way I read it, is you're allowing surface mining to expand by twenty acres from the existing operation, and adjust the final reclamation plan contours to comply with, with the, with the total project? Is that what the minor definition is?
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have a motion on M I M sixteen dash zero one zero?
Keep moving on, whether it goes or not, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to the Quea River Rock initial study negative deck adopted in October of two thousand and one, as consistent with the SEQA Title fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one five one six four, pertaining to an addendum to a prior SEQA document, and approve minor modification sixteen dash zero one zero.
Second, I'll second the motion.
Can we have the vote, please?
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Diaz?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Emiliano?
No.
Aguilar?
No.
Motion is not approved. Do we have another motion?
Chair, I could request that this be continued on?
That was gonna be...
We don't need a motion for that, yeah.
That was gonna be my motion.
I was gonna say, do we need a motion to continue this? Yes.
Yes. I would make...
I'd make that motion that we continue for thirty days.
What is the purpose of the continuance? My opinion, my, the reason that I'm doing that, I don't have enough information yet to make a decision. What information are we gonna go after?
We will try to clarify all the points made in opposition today, and points the planning commission has made for further clarification.
So we're gonna define what a minor modification is? I need clarification on, excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was talking. I'm sorry, apologies, go ahead. So we're gonna define what a minor modification is to this project?
We will absolutely define why a minor modification is super important.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, we knew there was some kind of exception here, and that's why we brought it to the planning commission, so I think it's prudent just to take another look, just in case we're overlooking something there. It's obviously important to the people that live in the area, so...
And when we approved the project, we discussed all these issues about groundwater, even though there wasn't a drought, so I'd like to keep it focused on, taking both sides, what, what their concerns of making it not a minor modification, so, is that clear?
Yeah, and that's what helped me too, that's kinda, just, it's a minor modification issue, because we're gonna move six hundred acre feet of material. That didn't sound like, I don't know how many tons are in an acre foot.
I'd like to keep the process going, because when I came in...
But I don't know that that's minor activity on a piece of dirt.
I came on the commission seventeen years ago, we've been talking about it for ten years, and so we need to not do another ten years.
That's why I asked, why, what we're defining.
We're defining the minor modification. What is a minor modification?
And Commissioner Diaz feels it's not minor, it's major, so we need to get that definition.
Okay, we get the vote for the continuance.
We have a, we have a motion, do we have a...
July twenty-seventh is the month?
July twenty-seventh, and do we have a sec, oh, I'm sorry, we do have a second? Yes, thank you very much, the vote, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Diaz?
No.
Emiliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Motion approved, thank you very much.
I know, well, once again, was just to make sure, keep the motion, keep this moving, okay?
So there will be no other notification, and it will be on July twenty-seventh, did it, here?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You will not get another notification. Thank you very much.
Hang on, hold on. Keep this?
Let's not kill any more trees. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a planning director's update?
Our, briefly, I know you're saying that you are in progress with updating our safety element, and that's coming, October, November, this year. And then, Plainview Park was grand hall event opening yesterday, we're very happy with that, that results in that. Dollar General, we have a close Dollar General in East Porterville, we've been coordinating with the city, Porterville Guarding it, for the water, we're gonna do some that, and we've, and we've, with that, so we, 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 the termination, the situation with the water for that particular project, and so we're doing that, and what might happen, something like that from there.
Excuse me, I'm sorry if you could be, make comments, we're still trying to have our meeting.
Thank you. And we issued building permits with all the hot wars, they'll be moving forward back, Dollar General, Genny, and Pixie is near completion, and there's, I guess, two more that are planned on planning for, for the, for the, for the, as well, so, there's a lot of activity going on, and we have some other bases still to remain confidential, they're just in the very preliminary, and once we get actual applications in, we'll share and passing forward.
What happens to the one in Springville?
Springville, we should be getting that back, there's some biological studies that have been, are just wrapping up, and we'll be packaging that together, and then we'll be back to, 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 to consideration, in, what, probably six weeks, somewhere in that range, either end of July or into August, but it'll be before even...
Still in the same location? Thought I'd change. Okay, thank you. Do we have anything else? John, do you wanna say anything about the...
Well, I just wanted to update on the CCPCA annual meeting, and it's on that weekend of October, I think thirteenth, you said it was a Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Because we, yeah, we'll need to be down there for the fourteenth and fifteenth for sure, and it's, the program's coming together, now the website, the CCPCA website has been updated, so a lot of the material will be added to there. The specific program isn't on there yet, but it will be shortly, and I've been looking at some of the draft stuff that's being proposed for it, it's, one of the sessions is gonna be between cities and counties, and their various planning commissioners. So we've had those in the past, and they've been very lively and informative, and I think we're gonna have another one at Riverside, and we're gonna, I think, be able to understand a little better how to interact with the cities and streamline the process, so. It's shaping up to be a great conference, and I hope everybody can make their room reservation as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Nothing to date? Okay.
Good job, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Adjourned. Um...